We are reconvening from closed session. I would ask the city attorney to report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. City Council is in closed session this evening for a conference with labor negotiator and conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. And there's no action to report on either of those items.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Powers there. Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Shelton.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Payne.
Here.
If you would join me in a moment of silent prayer, and that will be followed by the salutes of the flags. Vice Mayor, would you please listen to the flag?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's hands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have Donna do the video statement, please. And welcome Donna, tonight, in place of Liz.
Thank you. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable System. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. We would now ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions? No? Okay. Then we will go to presentations. And I would announce, it's listed on the agenda, that Janet Munoz and Joanne Forbene were to be recognized tonight for their five years of service of mentoring and sponsoring the Galt City Council Youth Committee. They chose to, as they put it, "go off silently into the sunset." I don't know if peers were involved, but they won't be here tonight. We do have certificates to present to them, which we will do personally in a personal, quiet place. Okay, the next presentation. It's the Central Gulf Interchange Traffic Control Presentation.
Gotta wait for the countdown.
Close. Should we get rid of those?
Easy goes off.
Yeah, by itself, there it goes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to make a presentation to the council for the traffic control for the Central Gulf Quarter Interchange Project. Every time you guys come to work in the morning, you see there's something else sticking up in the air. It doesn't look like a whole lot changes. But over time, you see an awful lot is happening. But you see a lot of "do not drive, turn here," a lot of barricades. And we thought it would be a good idea to get the council, as part of the outreach program, to share with the council what we're doing in terms of keeping traffic flowing, protecting the business that we have, the access to the business, and trying to minimize inconvenience for our citizens. With me tonight is Rick Demille. Rick is the resident engineer or construction manager. He's with a firm called Parsons Brinkerhoff. His task is to represent the city in building the interchange. He's going to walk you through a presentation, kind of show you what traffic's going to do throughout the project, let you know what's going on with the Caltrans project, and hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thanks Greg. As Greg said earlier, we're making a lot of progress on the interchange project. Most of the work up to recently, we've been working off of the travelway. So we haven't been impacting traffic. We've done some minor shifting of traffic, but nothing major. And something major is coming up in the next couple of weeks. We have some challenging traffic control that we're going to put into place on the interchange project. So just tonight, we're going to look at some of the traffic handling that's going to come up in the next couple of weeks, and then several stages and phases down the line. And I'm going to share with you some of the public outreach that we've been working on the last couple of weeks to get the word out of the upcoming traffic shifts. The one thing that we want to stress is that we're going to keep all driveways open. But the traffic patterns getting from A to B throughout the central region is going to change for a lot of people. So we're getting the word out to them. And as Greg said, there's a Caltrans resurfacing project to the north of us. Now, a lot of times, we get melded in with that project, but I wanted to share with you that that's a distinct different project from the interchange. And I'm going to share some milestones that they also have in terms of traffic control. And then, you know, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those and talk about some of the things that are upcoming. Some of the goals, obviously, we want to make sure that everyone moves freely through the construction zone in a safe and efficient manner. The goal is to minimize the congestion. There are some routes that we can take to avoid some of the backlog, and we're going to go through those on the various stages. It's all aimed at minimizing inconvenience for the traveling public. We want them to be able to reach the businesses, the market, and efficiently move back and forth. I've talked to some people, and they were under the impression that at some point, there was going to be no access across the freeway. And that's not actually true. There's going to be access across the freeway at all times throughout the process. And of course, we want to make sure the businesses thrive and the Galt market continues to add on patrons. And we do that through maximizing information to the public and getting it out there. And I'm going to show you exactly what we're doing in that aspect. As I said, up until recently, we haven't done much in terms of affecting traffic. We've been working on the perimeters of the project. We're doing a lot of work on this east side right here and also along Camellia Way. But for the most part, traffic on and off, northbound and southbound, has been unimpeded. One of the campaigns that we started early on was we've added a CMS board down in this vicinity. And our goal was to get people going to the market to come down to Fairway and get off. Because in this next phase, that's really going to be important if we want to move traffic through efficiently. So in this next, it's stage two, phase one. On 7/1, that's July 1st, we are going to, southbound traffic that gets off at the Central Gulf exit is no longer going to be able to access C Street directly. They will be run down A Street, and they can come up Lincoln, and then they can come back the back way. So it's very important that traffic come down to Fairway if you want to get to this southern area and also right in the shopping center. Now, the first question I always get is that back driveway going to be closed? During this phase, it will remain open. So that's on July 1st. That's when that's going to happen. On July 11th, what's going to happen is this work area along C Street is going to be closed to the traveling public. And I think that's the most significant modification to the traffic pattern that's going to occur on the project.
Just a little detail, that's the area between the interchange, or Fairway actually, and Civic. And so you'll be able to get off the freeway, come across, but you'll be able to turn onto Fairway. But you won't be able to go on down into Civic. So you have to access that area down Fairway around the backside.
And this entrance into the shopping center will remain open. The connector that's right out front here will actually have two directions of traffic. We're going to put two lanes in there. So there will be movement back and forth through that area. So there will be access to the shopping center. Let's see. Getting off southbound, again, it would benefit a lot of people to come down to Fairway and enter the back way. But again, there will be access on that back driveway. Now, northbound and southbound, northbound on and off will always be available either via Crystal Way, on and off there, or up at the Central Gulf. It may move from the existing to the new, but there will always be on and off capability on the northbound side. And the duration for that, we're estimating about five months. I'm hoping we can beat that. But conservatively speaking, plan to have that condition in play for about five months. So that's stage two, phase one. And during that timeframe, we're building the new A Street Bridge. It doesn't show it right there. But we're building the new A Street alignment that goes across the freeway. That's the supports that you see out in the median and on the shoulder right now. Stage two, phase two, we reconstructed the C Street area, and we've opened that back up to cross-traffic. And so the patterns are going to be pretty similar to what they are right now. Only the off-ramp traffic will not have access to A Street. During this phase, we're rebuilding A Street. The grade there raises up significantly. And this is the point where that access to that back driveway goes away. And again, northbound off and on will be available either via Crystal or the new on and off ramps up at Central Gulf and C Street. And this is another five-month duration. Now, we've completed, stage three, phase one, we've completed the new A Street Bridge. And we're going to put traffic across the new A Street Bridge. This allows us to get at the existing structure, demolish that, and start the replacement process. During this phase, it's a pretty circuitous route for northbound off-ramp traffic to come around. They have to use A Street and get all the way back here. That's the significant challenge for northbound traffic during this phase. Southbound will be able to get off at C Street or at Central Gulf and go A Street or also connect up to C Street. A little more challenging for northbound, a lot less challenging for southbound during this phase. At this point, we're continuing to work on the C Street Bridge. And off-ramp traffic can get off here, or they can go down to Fairway. Pretty much the same pattern for northbound traffic getting off and going up A Street. We're nearing completion. In fact, this is pretty much the last stage. And then again, this is five months. We build the bridge out here, and then we raise the embankments in this area in between the ramps. And I always get asked the question, "How is this thing going to look when all is said and done?" Well, you'll have your A Street coming across the freeway and extending to the east, and C Street turning into Bosso. And we have these couplets. And we have one-way traffic going this way and one-way traffic going this way on the couplets. And it provides for efficient circular pattern to move people through the area. And so there's going to be signalized intersections at four locations, actually, five locations. And then there's some minor modifications down at Civic Drive. So what have we done to this point? We've put out changeable message signs. They're scattered throughout the project limits. From day one, we've been trying, like I said, to get the southbound drivers to use the Fairway exit because that's going to be important for this next phase. We have on Market Day, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we have flaggers up at the intersections. And as we go through that phasing, we are going to position the flaggers strategically at the important locations to make sure the traffic flows effectively. I have some examples a little later of some flyers that we've handed out to businesses, the vendors, the businesses. And they seem to be very receptive. I did get some calls on it. And once I explained what's going on, that their business is not going to be blocked off, they seem to be, I wouldn't say happy, but very willing to get the project completed in the long run. So again, the thing we try to strive is, southbound, try to use Fairway if you're going to access the south side of C Street. And northbound is going to, the on and off movement is going to change with the various staging. Here's an example of, I had my office engineer go out last week. He handed out flyers to all the businesses in the shopping center within, I'd say, half a mile radius of the interchange project. And like I said, we did get some inquiries. But for the most part, everybody was cognizant of what was going to happen. We also had a flyer for the vendors. We know they come in early on Tuesday and Wednesday. And just to make them aware of the traffic pattern, how to best get in and get out, so to speak. And we've been working very closely with the folks over at the market. So that's been a very effective process for us. And again, we're using the Market Day flaggers to help us whenever needed. Just this morning, my office engineer was also, he went over and handed out flyers to the customers at the market, answered questions. We're going to do that tomorrow as well. Again, the whole effort is to get the word out there. And hopefully, when people show up that morning and things are switched around, they have a little bit of an idea of the correct route to go and how to get to point A from point B. So that's an example of the customer flyer that we put out. We also are maintaining the website. There's a lot of good information on there. CentralGaltIC.com is our website address. We update it with photos and job progress. And this is where you can get up-to-date, day-to-day coverage of what's going on. Because these dates can move and fluctuate a few days here or there. So we're going to continue to keep that up to date. We distribute all our information, flyers, notifications to, you know, emergency services, the public agencies, the school district, you name it, we got the list going. And everybody should be well-informed of what's coming up here in the near future. A little history on that Caltrans project, just to the north of us. It's an overlay project, they're doing resurfacing. And the limits are all the way from Simmerhorn to Elk Grove. So basically, they're going the next five weeks, every night, Monday through Friday, and they're doing paving. But again, this project is not related to the interchange. There is some coordination with Caltrans in terms of who gets lane closures. But up till now, the interchange project has not been affected. And we hope it stays that way.
We're very fortunate, Tiger is doing that work for Caltrans. And that's where we find most of the information, is talking to Tiger. They're working very closely with us to minimize the disruption to both jobs.
Correct. There are some milestones. There's some ramp closures at Twin Cities that is currently scheduled between the 8th and 21st of July. That's the southbound off-ramp at Twin Cities. And then shortly thereafter, the 22nd through August 4th, the on-ramp at Pringle will be closed for a short duration. So again, we're going to coordinate with Caltrans and make sure they get the word out. I've sat in on some meetings with them. But the big one that they've been targeting is they have a 55-hour weekend closure. And they're targeting that for mid-August. And so for 55 hours, from Friday evening to Sunday evening, they're going to have the southbound number one lane closed. I believe it's between Twin Cities and Pringle, somewhere in that vicinity. So they're going to, I know there's a PR effort that they're going to put out trying to head off truck traffic, especially south by Stockton, and try to get them to go over to I-5. But as we get closer to that, we should be able to offer some more information in terms of that project. So that's, in a nutshell, where we're headed. And I'd like to say that we're making a lot of progress. The rains came real late this year. But I think with this heat now, I think we're out of that and we're moving forward. So we'd be welcome to take any questions that you have.
Any questions from council?
I just had a comment, Rick. When the construction is all done, it's my understanding there's going to be some permanent lane and turning movement restrictions on Pine and Camellia. Can you talk about those really quickly? I think on that final one, it shows it. Although I don't know that it was highlighted. Right now, for example, coming out of McDonald's, you can turn left onto C Street. And I think in the future, you will not be able to make that turning movement. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. At Pine, it will be a right in off of C and a right out onto C. But the existing left turn movement will vanish.
Yeah.
Going out, you can turn in.
Going out will go away.
But you won't be able to turn out. You'll have to go back, southbound Pine. The same thing over in Camellia. You'll be able to turn from eastbound A Street and onto northbound Camellia. You'll be able to turn from westbound A Street onto Camellia. Again, that's a right in and right out. The movement that you would make from southbound Camellia to left turn, you can no longer make. So people that are used, unfortunately, people that are used to skirting down Camellia, hanging a quick left onto A Street and getting on the freeway, that's going to disappear. We just couldn't, there's just not enough room. The elevation differences didn't work out. Where we, one movement had to sacrifice. And that was the one that caused the least disruption in the overall circulation patterns. Unfortunately, for people in that one neighborhood, they'll have to go right, and then maybe make a loop around Lincoln and come back.
I had one question. I believe with stage two, phase two, you said that you were going to be redoing all of A Street. Now, is that going to be from the freeway all the way down to Lincoln you're going to redo?
No.
Just a partial way down, right?
Yeah, I may have misspoke. I think it goes to that driveway, driveway entrance into the school right there. That's where we pretty much stop.
Okay, because I was just curious, because we just did crossing.
It stops before the crossing.
Yeah.
Before the crossing, okay. That was it, that's all that?
Anything else? I'm just curious, when you get ready to demolish the C Street Bridge, how are you going to do that?
Well, what we do is, first, we've got to get rid of traffic, right? So...
So 9/9 will be closed, and you do that, or?
Yeah, so what you'll do is you'll demolish over, say, northbound the first night. And you detour traffic off via the off-ramp, and then you put them right back on. And it leaves the work area. And believe it or not, they can demolish that span from the west side to the median in one evening.
Really?
Within a five-hour stretch. Yes.
All right, any other questions? That was a very good presentation, thank you. We hope everything goes pretty smoothly. And that we'll do the best we can.
Thank you.
We will now go to public comments. Do we have any public comment sheet? No public comments? Then if you would read the consent calendar. Item 1, minutes of the special city council meeting of May 24th and June 7th, and the regular meeting of June 7th. 2, city of Galt warrants. 3, rescinding resolution number 2010-28 and 2010-29, certifying the Galt Walmart Project Environmental Impact Report, EIR, and project approvals pending revisions to the EIR and project approvals. 4, Walker Community Park hours of operation and alcohol restrictions. 5, award of liquid sodium hydroxide, liquid sodium hypochloride, liquid catonic polymer, liquid anonic polymer, liquid ferrochloride and carbon dioxide chemical bid. Very good. 6, purchase of portable diesel pump. 7, statewide park program grant funds, Walker Community Park. And the last item, 8, landscaping and lighting districts engineers report intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year 2011, 2012, and set public hearings. Nothing was pulled. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, as presented, all eight consent calendar items.
We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll call for the roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion has passed unanimously. We have no scheduled matters under regular calendar. It's that time of the month when I get to report on the strategic plan. It's a three-year plan that we are doing in stages of about three months, six months. And we have a PowerPoint.
Maybe.
Okay.
Hey, there we go.
The first goal that we are attempting to accomplish is to enhance economic development. And you can see from the PowerPoint that everything has been completed. We will talk a little bit about item number 3, where we have hired Buxton to survey the area to see what kind of businesses would work well in our community, make a match for us. Anything you want to add?
Just that we're making good progress, and we should have a presentation of the council in July.
Okay.
Next month.
All right, next item, track, develop, and retain quality staff. And we have revised a couple of them. Number 5's been revised, but we'll look at number 6. Each department head with one-on-one input from their full-time employees as appropriate as a group with part-time employees. There was, there will be an employee meeting scheduled July the 6th. We've revised this somewhat from our original goal, but I think we'll be on target for completion. The next item, improve financial stability and maintenance of reserves. We have item 9 and 10, which are on target. Item 8 has been revised. That is to develop a process for identifying programs and services that benefit individual users versus the community at large. That's something that our assistant city manager has been working on. And I think we're making good progress on that.
The council adopted those definitions at the last council meeting.
And actually, the next two items sort of depended on that one happening. So they should be making good progress. Increase community engagement. We have completed all four of those. I would mention, let's see...
Let me just mention while you're looking for it. You know, we've completed many of these items that were set up as six-month objectives. And so we will be getting back together in July to establish new objectives for the next six months.
Okay. So going to the next one then. Provide services and facilities responsive to community needs. Item 15 is completed. Item 16 is completed regarding unmet transit hearing process. I would report that this past week, we had a meeting with SAKOG, with Don Natoli and his staff, as well as the Galt Public Works staff. his staff, as well as the Galt, um, part, uh, Public Works staff. Our goal is to look at the existing routes from Galt to Sacramento. Actually, they go into Elk Grove, and see if we can adjust them so they're more user-friendly. Also, we're having discussions about setting up a commuter bus. Number eighteen, City Clerk, in collaboration with the Public Works Director and Parks and Recs Director, uh, will be conducting a ribbon-cutting hearing at Walker Park. It's been delayed slightly. Again, that late rain affected us, and it's scheduled for August the sixth. So, I think our report card is pretty good. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, we'll move along. Oops, sorry. It's like my ears. The next item is, uh, City Manager's Office.
Good evening, I'm Mayor, members of the City Council. My pleasure to present to you several items this evening, the first of which is discretionary funds that was, uh, was brought up at the last council meeting by Mayor Payne, and conferred by the rest of the council, that staff bring back this report for action on, uh, for the, for the City Council. What the request was, is to place an item on the agenda that would transfer a thousand dollars from each council member's travel money into discretionary account. Right now, each council member and the mayor's are allotted, uh, three thousand dollars each. So, we'll take that three thousand dollars, reduce the travel to two thousand, and have a thousand dollars that could be used for discretionary items to support worthy projects, community goals, uh, other programs and things to support the community at the council member's discretion. If the council decides to move forward with the transfer, staff's recommendation would that would be subject, subject to a couple of different requirements and provisions. First of which would be getting approval authorization from the city attorney to make sure the request is in line with the use of public funds. The second would be that the council member would bring back the items for a vote of the full city council, so that, um, it would, it would have full public disclosure, and it would require a majority of vote at the city council in order to expend those funds. And, uh, that is the report from staff. Happy to answer any questions. We'd really like to turn it back to the City Council for discussion and action.
Okay. I would also, uh, comment that even though you have a thousand dollars that's labeled discretionary money, if you so desired, you could use that for travel expenses. Um, I will ask for discussion or comments from the council, and then I have a couple of follow-up comments. Councilman Cruz?
I do have a comment on this. Um, I don't feel comfortable with this, okay? Give the public another reason to question the actions of the council. Uh, it has the appearance of setting up a slush fund for pet projects. I mean, if we're going to take monies away, let's do it similar to what we did with your intern project. As the projects come up, we'll shift the monies. Let's not set a slush fund aside. It just, it sets the wrong tone for this council.
Okay. Were you through? Any other comment?
I'll wait. Deferred, no other comments? Okay, well, I'm at almost off at ends of Councilman Cruz. We had the program before. Uh, let me just state when it, uh, it was from two thousand two to two thousand six. Uh, at no time did a council member go off and spend the funds. It always had to come back and have a majority of vote. I don't know what the legalities are. I know it went through the attorney at that time and did get approved. Uh, to me, it was very similar to, uh, the program that you initiated, you know, with the intern, and so the funds would be there, and if they were not used at the end of the calendar year, then it would go back into the budget, or if need be, there was some extra, uh, used for educational purpose for, for council members. So, I am for it, so that we don't go through. We know ahead of time that we have that five thousand dollars to be used for, like... And the only example is staff, or another intern, Tim, or something. That's my opinion.
Anybody else? Any other council members?
I agree with Councilmember, um, Singleton.
Okay. Uh, I would, unless, Councilman Singleton, I'd be...
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. I would just say, I think the, the main purpose of suggesting this is, it just makes it cleaner, because upfront, you know that money is there. Number one, it does, uh, come before the City Council in a public meeting just like this, how you're gonna spend it, and, um, has to be approved by the majority of the City Council. Um, and if it's, from an accounting point of view, if you have the money set up that way, it seems cleaner than taking, um, in the middle of the year, what we call our travel money, and picking it up out of there and putting it someplace else. It just seems to facilitate what we're trying to do a little bit easier. Uh, in answer to your comment about transparency, I think it's, my opinion, uh, the fact that it does have to come, uh, before the City Council, has to be voted on at City Council meeting, it's just as transparent as it was before. So, if there are no other comments, I would ask if there is a motion.
How about the motion to approve?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. Question?
Okay.
Comment?
Ahead, absolutely.
This was your recommendation to, we would move this from here to City Attorney, right? Just wanna make sure, does that need to be in the motion for legality purposes, and then bring it back?
I just wanna know if we need to amend the motion.
I don't think so. I mean, I think, uh, just, it just added, you know, if there's ever a question about, okay, I wanna spend the funds on this, I think it's just a good practice to come in and talk to the city attorney. If there's not really a, a question, then it's, you know, you can bring it back and have it voted on by the full council. Um, I just don't wanna be in a situation where a councilor brings something back, and then the city attorney has to type up and say, wait a second, that's not an appropriate use of public dollars. So, it's just kind of a good practice, if there's ever a question about whether it's something legitimate for the, for the use of those funds, come and have a little chat with the city attorney in advance.
Sure.
And, and it is included in, in the discussion, so I was assuming that was part of the motion. Okay. Any other discussion on the matter? Then, we have a first and a second. Uh, can we have a roll call vote, please? Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
No.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion is passed for one. Next item. You wanna read the...
Oh, redistricting proposal. That's a tough one.
After all those chemicals.
You did the chemicals fine. Sure. Power call?
Waiting load.
Okay. This item is to discuss the new redistricting proposal that's currently being circulated for public review and comment. Um, the new California Citizens Redistricting Commission just recently issued in, uh, maps, redistricting maps for congressional districts, state assembly, state senate, uh, district boundaries within the state of California, and asked for public comment. There are several different, uh, public comment meetings coming up in Stockton and Sacramento, and they're also asking for written comments, and so we thought it would be a good idea, actually, a couple council members suggested that we bring this item before the council to get a collective response from the council, that we could then submit into the California Redistricting Commission to let them know how the City of Galt feels about these proposals. And so, what I'd like to do first is read the criteria that the commission will use in determining the final boundaries. Um, and they list these in priority order. The first is to draw districts with equal population. Second is to comply with Federal Voting Rights Act. Third is to draw districts that are contiguous, so that a district should be connected at all points. Fourth is that the, the boundaries respect counties, cities, communities of interest, and neighborhoods to the extent possible. Fifth is to draw districts to be compact or practicable and apply it only after the early criteria have been satisfied. Sixth is to draw districts to nest within each other or practicable. That is, one senate district contains two assembly districts, one board of equalization district contains ten senate districts, and so on. Final one, the commission may not consider incumbent or political candidate's residence in creating a district. So, those are the criteria that they're gonna be looking at, so when we make comments back to them, we need to be, uh, we need to keep those in mind, so that we can tailor our comments to satisfy those requirements. That's gonna be their criteria. So, I've got up on the slide here, the congressional district, proposed congressional district boundaries. Let me get my little thing here. And Galt is down there in the very bottom corner, and it includes, uh, uh, much of Sacramento County. It goes up in Folsom, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and does not include Elk Grove and City of Sacramento. It does include much of the existing congressional boundary, which is, um, Dan Lundgren's district. The old district stretched more into the foothills along here, but it also did include many of these same cities. So, it's not as drastic of a boundary change as some of the other ones. It does include some of the, the larger Galt area district to the west here, but it, but it does exclude some of the, not the City of Galt, but the Galt area to the west of the city. And this is one of the big concerns, I think, in looking at the boundaries, is the City of Galt is intact, and all of them in our, in our, our sphere of influence is intact, but what's largely considered the, the greater Galt area, which would include, um, boundaries of the high school district, for example, where people consider themselves to be Galt, you know, Galt, uh, residents, those are often bifurcated or separated into two different districts. As you can see, um, the, this high school district boundary goes out here, um, and so they would be in a separate, they're being, part of that district would be in a separate congressional district.
Can you show us where Highway Five is on that map?
Right here.
That kinda jagged line is the highway?
There.
Okay.
Ninety-nine, right there. So, and the high school district boundary, I've got another map, it goes down there and goes out, and goes, actually goes into San Joaquin County, too.
Where would you estimate the boundary is? What, like a street or something?
Oh, this, uh, it looks like from the maps that this boundary goes to about Christiansen over here, up to the wastewater shooting plant, and then further north along Ninety-Nine, and then cuts across, um, at, this is probably Grant Line would be my guess, across, and then it kinda cuts out Elk Grove and then comes back in, and then it goes up and includes the other cities within Sacramento County. Um, the, the interesting thing here is it, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't go much outside of Sacramento County. It's a district that's pretty wholly contained within the county of Sacramento, which is unlike the other senators and, and assembly districts. That gives you a sense of where that is.
Do we wanna take each one, um, and ask questions as we go along?
Sure.
Uh, it just seems like they're, they're confusing.
Yeah.
So, this is the congressional district. Um, and as the City Manager mentioned, uh, currently Dan Lundgren's district.
So, he would still be in this district and still representing the City of Galt, which I believe is a good thing. He's done a good job representing us and knows the council, knows staff well, and have established a good relationship with him.
I think the only question, again, we have is the western boundary.
How far out it goes this way?
To Christiansen.
Right.
And one of the comments that has come up is, where's McFarland Ranch? You know? That should be in our district, but it looks like if that's Christiansen, then it would not, nor would the, um, Nature Conservancy, which is where we have our winter bird festival.
Yeah.
Are we commenting on these one at a time, then?
Yeah.
Is that what we're doing?
Yeah. If that's okay. Less confusing.
Right. Uh, I, I have on all three of them the same concern, and that is, uh, uh, number four, that I don't think there's respect for the city with our boundaries there. I think that, uh, our boundaries should be the greater Galt area, and it should actually include the schools, you know, areas.
The, the district boundaries.
Yeah.
The high school district boundaries.
Yeah.
As opposed to elementary schools, 'cause we have feeder.
Yeah, there's a lot of different elementary school districts that feed into the high schools. So, the high schools are better, I think.
And it's, it's, it's a more expanded, correct?
Much larger, yes.
Which is, you know, I, I think just boxing us in there by the city is...
Yeah. It's more, I think, magnified if you look at the next map.
Right.
That really kinda carves Galt out in Sacramento County. This one is, at least we're intact with Sacramento County.
Yeah.
The other one, we're the only Sacramento County jurisdiction in, in the other districts.
So, uh, as we make these comments, are you...
I got it.
You got it?
We're making notes and, and we'll, we'll put together a coordinated response on behalf of the City Council, have the mayor sign it, and we'll send it off to the commission for an official response, so...
So, are there any other comments on this? We can always come, come back, but I thought it was easier if we take each one. Okay.
Sure.
I think we're ready to move on.
Yep. The next one, this is the senate district, but I've also, we can talk about the assembly district, because the assembly district nests, one of the criteria was nesting. The assembly district actually nests inside of the senate district. So, this, the dark line that goes around like this, this is the whole senate district. Within this is our assembly district, but it's cut kind of in half. So, this is the assembly district, the larger area is the senate district, if that makes sense. So, since we've got the, the, the senate district, we'll take that first. You can see Galt over here on this corner, right here. It extends down, includes Lodi. Um, Galt, Lodi are kinda similar, because really the only San Joaquin city that's included in this district is Lodi, similarly to Galt, which is the only Sacramento County jurisdiction in the district. So, they've included us together, which isn't a bad thing, because Lodi and Galt have a lot of things in common and a lot of similarities. Um, but the boundary then extends further west. It swoops down and includes the city of Oakley, which is in Contra Costa County, and then goes across, um, to get the city of Vallejo. You can see other cities in here, Fairfield, Vacaville, Dixon. It goes up to the Napa Valley, up in here, St. Helena, and then it goes over to Santa Rosa, and then comes up further up in Napa County area, and then across incorporates the city of Woodland, does not include the city of Davis, and then it kinda comes down back, down Highway Five, cuts across, includes Galt. And similar to the congressional district, it does not extend beyond really the Christiansen boundary. So, what, uh, Vice Mayor Powers indicated is to enlarge this, what we would recommend is taking this line straight across there, and that way we would include that area to the west here, which is the school district boundaries, and we would also probably ask to extend it a little bit further this way. So, instead of having this little arm that comes up, it would be more of a natural, I think, boundary, which, which makes sense, and I think we have a good shot at doing that, because there's not gonna be a huge population swing. The problem is, if you say, we don't want this whole city somewhere else, that means they have to take thirty thousand people out of another district to make room for you. If all you're adding is a couple thousand people, I think it's a lot easier of a boundary change to make. Um, so I think, you know, I'm not sure how, how serious the commission's gonna take all the comments that they receive. I know many jurisdictions across the state are having concerns, and so they're gonna be bombarded with different comments, but I think if we're very strategic and focused on our requests, and don't make the request too large, and we have very good explanations, reasons why we wanna make the change, then I think we stand a pretty good chance of, of getting somewhere.
Can you tell how far east it goes?
Um, I believe that it goes out to about, uh, Cherokee.
It doesn't include Harold?
Does not include Harold.
Um, any comments from...
So, that's the...
Council?
Uh, there we are. That's the senate boundary.
Okay.
Where is it?
I can see your light.
It's not showing up.
Your light's not on.
It's up on the wall above now.
There it is.
When I come down, it disappears. Oh, there it goes. All right, came back.
Okay.
Okay.
It went out under one of those...
Hey, we got fighting lights now. So, the assembly district is the same boundaries on this area, so it, it goes from Galt, this is the assembly district now, it's a smaller district, but it nests inside the larger senate district. So, it goes, includes the same area around Galt, goes down to Lodi, includes, um, Oakley, and then, it doesn't go all the way to Vallejo, it cuts up here, includes Vacaville and Dixon, and then cuts across and goes up, includes Woodland. So, it doesn't include Napa, it doesn't include Santa Rosa, doesn't include Vallejo and some of these other areas, but it does include this kinda core, this half of that, that district boundary. That's for the assembly. Um, senate again is the larger area, but Galt's area right around here does not change in either proposal. Those boundaries are exactly the same, so we can make the same proposal, the same, uh, comments and recommendation, it would apply to either one of those boundaries.
Do we have any comments from the council? If not, I have a couple to throw in.
And you can see, if you wanna compare us to other boundaries, if you go to the north of us, um, Elk Grove... north of us, Elk Grove is included with the city of Sacramento to the north, and then if you go further west or further east, you have Rancho, Folsom, Roseville, that are kind of included together in a different group.
One of the things that bothers me is that we're no longer in Sacramento County, is that something that we should be concerned about. I know a lot of the board meetings that we go to, where it's convenient to be talking to the other board members in Sacramento County. It gives us a good network. Uh, and I wonder about the fact that we're not also included with Elk Grove, is I wonder if that's going to affect our, um, fire department. Uh, we have emergency disaster program in conjunction with them.
Yeah, the CERT program.
Yeah. And, um, you know, I'm not sure what the effect would be, but it's something that does concern me. Um, so with this, we're not in, um, the same district as Elk Grove or Sacramento County. We're more to the east, um, I mean, to the west, more towards Santa Rosa for the senate, all the way to Santa Rosa for the senate.
Um, if you look at the, and that's true, if you look at the current boundaries, we're not in Sacramento County either. Our boundary extends into Contra Costa County, our current representative in the assembly lives in the city of San Ramon, it's San Ramon, Danville, Brentwood, et cetera, a lot of the, those communities. It does not include the city of Lodi, it does not, it's just a very small portion of the city of Elk Grove. And if you look at the senate district, it goes in the opposite direction, it goes to the Sierras, it goes up to the Oregon border, down through County of Mono, down by Mammoth Lakes, and it doesn't include any of those areas either. So, um, it's been, it's been, it's been an issue, it's not that we're losing anything that we haven't had.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, we've always kind of been off on our own, and it's not just us, the way they've had boundaries, uh, drawn throughout the state of California are really bizarre, and it's been before political purposes. They try to carve out, here's the Democrat seat, the Republican seat, and now they're trying to somewhat fix that, but it's, it's hard, it's difficult to do.
Can you tell if this includes McKenzie, where we have eighty acres for a park? Are we in the same district, or are we putting that park in another district?
Um, I, no, it does not, it does not go up that far. It does not, other than including our wastewater treatment plant, it does not extend north of Twin Cities.
It sort of follows our current general plan, though. It does include...
It does. So, so if you, if you wanted to take a look at the high school district boundary, for example, it does include McKenzie, it does go up past Arno and up that way, so that would, well, it'd extend it up further north.
Okay. Okay. The other thing, too, that, um, is on my mind, is transportation. That's a big issue that we're talking about at CACOG, and working with Elk Grove with our transit system. And again, I don't know if that would have any effect if we were looking for grant money or not, but it's something I think we should think about.
Yeah. It's hard, I mean, it's hard to really say what the impact is going to be. When we talk about working with other jurisdictions, we rarely use congressional or state or assembly district boundaries in doing any of that. We have other jurisdictional boundaries, county lines, the CACOG boundaries, other things that we lumped together with different cities for transit and transportation, have nothing to do with the district lines of what we're, what we're talking about here is really representation. Who's your representative? Who represents your community? Um, and who do we go to when we need, when we need assistance? Um, and sometimes it's nice to band together with other cities and go to the same congressional representative and say, "Galt and Elk Grove, we have the same concern," and we go meet with a representative that represents both of us, as opposed to, we go to our rep, they go to their rep, and we're represented separately. So, so that wouldn't, I mean, that wouldn't work with Elk Grove, but at least now we have, one of our neighbors is with us, which is Lodi.
Mm-hmm.
So we could coordinate with Lodi in our outreach to our state assembly and our state senate representative in having meetings that way.
And we are similar in our economic, you know, with our agriculture and that type of thing.
True.
Okay. Anybody else? So, do you have direction, do you think?
What I'm, what I'm, I've heard, the main comment I've heard so far is expanding Galt area to include the greater Galt area, which is generally defined as the high school district boundaries, which is the main comment, that we would try to explain why that we, that that's important to us, why that is considered, um, part of the Galt community, and see if we can get those, those boundaries changed to align with that. If there are other comments that the council would like to make, I'm happy to incorporate those into the letter, but that would be the main emphasis of my, of the city's comments that I will put together, unless I hear otherwise from the council.
Okay.
That, I think that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the direction I need. I will prepare a letter and, for the mayor's signature, and we'll get that out as soon as we can.
And thanks a lot, Jason, because I was really confused about this and trying to look at it on the web, so thank you for getting us to us so quickly, because I think it's really important right now that we get it, you know, we get some comments in as soon as we can.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, and I know I had, and thank you, the council, I know public council members, uh, mayor and vice mayor both came to me, asking questions, and, you know, it just, just kind of came out overnight without a lot of public comments, and all of a sudden you have two weeks to make comments, and it's all really quick, 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 and so, um, I think we did a good job working together to get this in front of everybody in order to make the comments back to the commission, so I appreciate everybody's thoughts and comments.
Thank you, too, Vice Mayor, for your comments. Next item.
Labor agreements with the Galt Police Officers Association and Galt Public Service Unit, changes to salary and benefits for unrepresented employees, amendments to the Galt Personnel Manual, and a resolution reducing employer-paid member contributions to PERS.
Okay. Before I get into the details of this proposal, or what you have in front of you tonight, I'd like to thank a few individuals, primarily our city attorney, Steve Rudolph, our HR administrator, Paul East, last in the outstanding job they did in negotiating these contracts with our labor groups. I'd also like to thank the, uh, the labor groups themselves, their, their teams of negotiators, did an outstanding job coming to the table, meeting with the city, being very open, honest dialogue. We had great conversations, it was great teamwork, very willing to work with the city, understanding our financial situation. Also, all of the city of Galt employees, ultimately the city of Galt employees, those represented, voted on this, and, uh, and accepted, and really became part of the solution. So we were trying to find a way to help the current financial situation in the city, still being mindful of the sacrifice that our employees are willing to make, and so I really appreciate and want to acknowledge the goodwill and the efforts made by all of our employees to come to the table and negotiate what I believe is a very fair, equitable deal for both the city, as well as all the employees. So having said that, I will get into some of the details of all of the contracts that you have in front of you. We put them all as part of one, one group, because they're all very related. We tried to do our best to be fair and equitable across all of the different groups, so while you can't treat them all the same, because they all have their own unique needs, you try to, to spread it and make sure that, that it's an equitable treatment among all the different classifications of our employees. So we've, like I said, we've successfully negotiated agreements with our Galt Police Officers Association, the Galt Public Services Unit, and also have, um, changes to all of our unrepresented employees through our Personnel Manual and so forth that I'll be discussing. Uh, so a brief summary of the agreements is included in your packet, I will go over that. The detail, obviously, is also included in your packet for the, both the redline version and the clean version of the different contracts. The Personnel Manual was inadvertently left out of the packet that was distributed to the council, however, that was made available to the council yesterday. It's also available here at the council meeting, if any member of the public would like to, uh, to have access to that. We did put the summary items in the staff report, the changes to the Personnel Manual are included in there, but if anybody would like to examine that, um, we'll make that available to them. So let me go through first the contract with, or the MOU, with the Galt Police Officers Association. Uh, all of the deals, all of the contracts are for three years, starting July one of this year, concluding in June thirty of two thousand fourteen. With the GPOA, uh, there'd be a continuation of the existing furloughs, which is seventy-four hours per year, which equates roughly to a three point five-five percent salary reduction across the board. Now this, uh, furlough will be reevaluated on an annual basis. Every year we'll examine the city's financial condition, if things have improved, we're back on solid footing, and that amount could be reduced or eliminated at any point throughout the three-year term. And again, uh, um, once a year, we will reevaluate that, meet with the groups, and see if there is an ability, the city has the ability at that point to reduce that, which is, which is our hope, but we wanted to get a long-term contract, because the reality is, we don't know how long or when we're going to start to see a significant recovery. A second part of the contract with GPOA is the elimination of a one point nine percent city contribution to a supplemental retirement deferred compensation account for all members of the GPOA. That will be, uh, eliminated through the three years of this contract. Another significant change will be overtime will, will only be compensated as compensable time, so will no longer be paid out. Compensable time will be increased to two hundred hours. In the third year of the contract, employees can cash out up to forty hours of that amount, um, and that will significantly reduce our expenditures by not having to pay out for overtime incurred by our officers. A final one for, at least for, for the officers is the floating holiday. Currently, we have one of our holidays that's taken as a floater, people can take it whenever they want, and there's a provision that if people don't use it, they can cash it out. We've eliminated that provision in the contract, so it's a use or lose it situation now. The holiday is still there, they can use it, but if they don't, then it simply goes away instead of having a cash payout to the employee. The final thing for GPOA is the non-sworn employees will pay two percent into their PERS employee, employee portion of their retirement. Right now, the sworn officers already pay the full employee share, which is nine percent. The miscellaneous employees, the, the, um, non-sworn employees as part of GPO do not pay any portion into their PERS retirement, so this will be the first time employees in that unit that are, that are non-sworn will pay, it'll be two percent of the seven percent. So the city will continue to pay five percent of the employee share, and the employees now will begin to pay two percent. For GPSU, it's a, it's a similar contract, it's a three-year term, same, same dates, a furlough of a hundred and four hours per year, which equates to five percent pay reduction. Again, the same thing, where there's language in there that this will be reevaluated on an annual basis. In addition, the employees will pay two percent into the CalPERS retirement system out of the full seven percent. And similar to the GPOA, the floating holiday will be a use or lose it scenario, employees have to use that. Unrepresented employees will receive the same, uh, concessions as the GPSU employees, namely, they will have the same furloughs, which will be five percent, the hundred and four hours per year. They will also pay two percent into their PERS employee retirement employee share. Unrepresented includes your professional staff, your mid-managers, your department heads within the city. In addition, the city attorney and I have agreed to voluntarily accept the same reductions as all the other unrepresented employees in the city, namely, the same five percent furlough and the two percent contributions into the employee PERS. We did the same thing last year with the last contract, where there was a three and a half percent furlough reduction, and so we will continue to, to have the same reductions that all the other employees receive. There are a number of other changes to the Personnel Manual as part of the report, mostly just reflective of these changes. There's new language in there about the furlough hours, there's, uh, new changes, there's changes about the floating holiday, there's a whole, new section, we kind of revamped the layoff and recall provisions of the contract. I already mentioned the furloughs, so the retirement plan reflects the two percent. We are also making a change, we have to officially make a change to our PERS, our contract with PERS, to allow the employees to pay their two percent. Um, it also, there are also some, uh, changes or updates to hours, hours of work, and like I said, holiday pay. The total savings resulting from these changes to all of these employee groups, uh, on an annual basis is about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year, citywide, that's about four hundred thousand dollars to the general fund. So the total over the three-year term of the contract, if you assume that the furloughs remain in place over that three-year period, is a total savings of about one point three million dollars for the general fund, that's about one million dollars over the three years. There's a number of, uh, resolutions and items for you to approve or consider this evening, and let me just read those off to you. There are several different recommendations. The first recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the MOU with the Galt Police Officers Association for the period July one, two thousand eleven through June thirty of two thousand fourteen. Number two is to adopt a resolution approving the MOU with the Galt Public Service Unit for the period of July one, two thousand eleven through June thirty of two thousand fourteen. Third is to approve changes to the salary and benefits for unrepresented employees. Fourth is to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the City of Galt Personnel Manual. Fifth is adopt a resolution for reducing employer-paid member contribution to PERS. Sixth is accept the voluntary modifications to the employment agreements of the city manager and the city attorney. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? From anybody?
I think we don't have any questions, because we've all been working hard. So, you know, and we've read this over and over.
Okay. Um, I'm going to ask the city attorney, do we need to take each one of these items separately?
Uh, no, ma'am, if there's consensus among the council, you can entertain one motion for all items.
Is that agreeable? Do you, everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approved as presented items, actually, and the numbers that they, that the city manager had presented to us, one through six. I'll second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the roll call vote, please.
Next, Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Motion has been, has passed unanimously, and with thanks, I'm sure I can say this for the whole council, for the cooperation, hard work on this. I know it's difficult times, and I feel like we've all pulled together, and it's only right that we appreciate everybody's efforts. Thank you.
Let me just make another, just a very brief comment. I want to thank, really, the council for providing very clear direction and guidance during the whole process. It's very important for staff, and I felt the council did a nice one job of providing that, that direction back to us, so it should be commended for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ready to move on? The next item is Culture and Recreation Department. I would ask you to read that.
St. Christopher's Catholic Church and Galt's Beauty and Character Coalition Harvest Moon Festival request. Before you report on that, I'm going to recuse myself as an officer of the Community of Character Coalition. I'm going to pass the gavel over to the vice mayor, and I will leave.
So I guess it's to you, Mr. Weiss, or...
Excuse me?
Um, who's doing this for?
Right. I'm waiting for her to leave.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. (laughing). Okay. Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council, we have before you a special event request for use of the market grounds by St. Christopher's Catholic Church and the Galt Community of Character Coalition. They wish to hold their Harvest Moon Festival as a joint event this year, first time it will be a joint event. Uh, they will conduct it on Saturday and Sunday, October one and two. They are also asking for any or all fee reductions, especially the business license fee. Uh, staff is recommending that the city council review and provide comments to staff regarding use of the market grounds for the Harvest Moon Festival for the municipal code. Uh, second, for the city council to approve one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars in fees to cover direct costs incurred by the city, as detailed in the report. This is consistent with other charitable cause events, such as the Strawberry Festival and the Cherokee Cook Show, that raise money for charity. And the final recommendation is that all other fees be waived. As noted, there is more detail on all this, particularly the, uh, cost to the city, in the report, and then I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I motion to approve staff's recommendations.
First and second?
I'll second, and if no one else will.
Call for the votes, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And then we can, motion passes, and we can call our mayor back in.
Let you off the hook.
I think she can maybe, here she comes.
I think she can hear the TV out there.
Welcome back. Next item, communications. Are there any written communications that we need to bring forward at this time? We need to mention the letter we got from City of Woodland?
We can. Would you like to?
I don't have the copy.
Uh, we did, we received a letter from Yolo County expressing some concerns about the new redistricting boundaries, and they felt that the entire county of Yolo should be included together, and as you can see from the map-
Right.
-Davis, West Sacramento is kind of separate from some of the other communities and so forth, so they felt very strongly that they should all be together as one county. And so, they wanted, I think, to solicit Galt support in that same proposal.
Probably, okay. Any other communication? If not, we will adjourn and go to redevelopment. And roll call, please. Board members, Powers?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Public comments?
None.
We have no speaker sheets? So, consent calendar?
Aye.
Out of A, minutes of the meeting of June 7, 2011, and B, redevelopment agency warrants?
I can't hear.
Then moved and double seconded. We will have any other discussion or any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, please. Board members, Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. We will now adjourn from redevelopment and reconvene to the regular Galt City Council, and first item is the city clerk's report.
National Night Out, rescheduling or canceling the regular council meeting of August 2, 2011. Recommendations recommended the city council reschedule or cancel the meeting of August 2 to allow council members to attend neighborhood gatherings for National Night Out. In the past, council has expressed a desire to attend neighborhood gatherings for National Night Out, which always falls on the first council meeting in August. The clerk's office contacted Sacramento Metro Cable, and they would be able to cover the meeting only if it was held on Wednesday, August 3. At this time, council can cancel the meeting of August 2 or reschedule the meeting to the preceding Monday without cable, or the following Wednesday with future coverage.
Comments? Do you have a preference? Council?
Um, I won't be there the week of the 5th through the 12th. My preference would be to have it on Wednesday, the 3rd. Does that care?
Do we need to vote on it, or we have a consensus?
By direction.
Okay. We're done with that.
Third?
Third.
Got it.
Yep.
Uh, we will now go to comments by staff. Do we have any? Yes, sir, Mr. Vice.
You have in front of you, and they are also located in the speaker forum boxes, information on the Independence Day celebration. It'll culminate with the annual fireworks spectacular, but before that, at 10:00 a.m., we start with tournaments, softball tournament, one pitch, volleyball tournament, and horseshoe tournament, and there's still space available, so contact Parks and Recreation Office. At 2 o'clock, Veterans Field will be the family fun zone, with lots of activities for kids, also, and that will include jump houses and a lot of activities like that. It'll also include local Galt nonprofits selling food, so you'll be able to buy food there and eat it. And then at 5:30, we get the band Inner Soul that begins playing music, and our own council member Singleton will be the emcee for the day over there. Community members are encouraged to bring blankets, beach chairs, just no glass, any food or drink you want, and enjoy all the activities and watch the fireworks from there. At 5 o'clock, the skateboard park will have a contest among skaters, and starting at 7 o'clock, you can check in with your family to the pool, and just kind of hang out in the pool and watch the fireworks go off. So, all in all, it's going to be a, a great time for the community, and we have white flyers and blue flyers are exactly the same, we're just trying to get your attention, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
And I do want to thank the two council members who are working, and they're not just sitting on the dais giving direction, they're actually rolling up their sleeves and working to make this happen, Vice Mayor Powers and Councilmember Singleton.
Thank you very much. It looks like it'll be a exciting time. Can you request that it's not 101 degrees that day?
Some things are beyond our control.
Oh, it's harsh. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments by staff?
Um, can you do me a favor, please, and just tell everyone why we have the fireworks this year on July 2?
We have fireworks primarily to protect the revenue source. The Galt market produces $3 million a year in revenue for the city and funds almost all of Parks and Recreation Department. If we were to have it on the 4th of July, we would not be able to have the market that next day, and we would lose a significant amount of revenue. Plus, it is the weekend, too, and people tend to gather with families and friends on weekends, so it really works out quite well.
So, if there, if the 4th of July falls on certain days during the year, it should be known, and the citizens of Galt should know that we cannot have it specifically on the 4th of July.
Correct.
We've done this in the past.
Right.
This isn't the first year we haven't had-
I just wanted to reiterate it one more time.
And I like the way you're calling it Independence Day celebration, that sort of-
Exactly.
-picks the conflict out of the-
And on the actual 4th of July, the, all the parks will be open for families and friends and neighbors to gather there, which is a great place to gather and have your own celebration for Independence Day. So, we're offering a couple of different options.
Awesome. All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, any comments by staff? Nope. Moving along, comments by council members. Vice Mayor?
Well, no, I was just going to comment on the Independence Day celebration, and I'm really looking forward to a lot of people coming out, and I think that you should know that it's free, except if you sign up for any of the tournaments, and they're, they're very minimal, the tournaments, costs, so I think it's going to be a lot of fun, and I think it'll be a great place for the citizens of Galt to gather and hang out together. Still looking forward to it. Councilmember Singleton?
I agree. Like I said before, this is kind of fallen out, and we've gotten together with staff, Parks and Rec, Mary's done a great job, our mom, Dos Elites, has done an excellent job, just a great job at grabbing the reins and running off with us, and we've all helped each other, and I'm looking forward to getting back to basics and family fun.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Yeah, I would just like to add that over the Independence Weekend, I'd just like everyone to be a little safe out there, watch the heat. If you do buy fireworks, please buy the safe and sane, because if you buy the illegal, you're probably not going to like what's going to happen to you.
That's right.
Okay? To be safe, so hopefully no one gets hurt. Thank you.
Spoken like a true fire marshal.
I'm sure.
I know, awesome, man. Perfect. Councilwoman Cruz?
You'd even do that one also. Um, same thing, the Independence Day celebration, you guys have done an outstanding job on it. I'm looking forward to it, especially looking forward to seeing you playing horseshoes, I've been told you're excellent at it, Randy. But that's about it for me.
Okay. And I have no comments tonight, so then-
What?
The meeting is adjourned!
Yeah. It's embarrassing. Yeah. You like that photo? You just came into town. I like it. We can do a lot with that with the meeting. Little different. Probably, but I don't know. Yeah. We can do that. We're wondering if that's, you know, we're, we're gonna do it. What now? Yeah. Yeah, you can, thank you.
About that?
I almost missed the first one.
Well, I, I guess we could have stood up and said it, yeah.
You were never-
Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah. You were never- Yeah.[1749.15]